I think it's, I think it's close enough. All right. Thank you. As we come out of closed session, we'll jump right into 2.02 certification of closed session in accordance with Code of Virginia, Section 2.2-3711A.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I move that the Rona County School Board come out of closed session for the following: to discuss ongoing personnel matters under investigation pursuant to the personnel exemption at 2.2-3711A1 of the Code of Virginia, and for consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members pertaining to, pertaining to actual or probable litigation, and consultation with legal counsel regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel pursuant to 2.2-3711A7 of the Code of Virginia. And I also move to certify that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under this chapter, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened, were heard, discussed, or considered in the meeting by the school board.
Second.
Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am. Item 2.03, action from closed session. Before we, before we take a vote on action from closed session, you know, I'll just make kind of a, a brief statement about that. You know, the action will be selecting Mr. Butzer's replacement until, until the election in November. And I'll just preface that by saying, you know, we had four excellent candidates apply for this interim position, and, you know, we had a very difficult time selecting one person. And really, at the end of the day, we felt the citizens of the Catawba District should be the ones to select their new representative, and so we decided to appoint an interim representative who will not be running for elections, so as to give all those who do run an even playing field. And it's, you know, we hope that all those applied will consider, you know, running and serving their community. And it's, it's my pleasure to announce that former school board member David Wymer, you know, has, has agreed to fill in that interim role until the citizens of Catawba can make that selection. And, you know, we're thankful, you know, for his past service and for him stepping up to the plate and helping us up and know that he can hit the ground running and, you know, and help us with some decisions as we get the kids back to school in the fall. So.
With that being said, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Mr. David Wymer to replace Mr. Butzer for the remainder of the year.
Okay, Madam Clerk?
I'm abstaining, and I just want to explain so there's no hurt feelings. I, I was asked, and I agreed by the board that I would not participate in the vote, so I'm abstaining for that reason only. Abstain.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Mr. Wymer, would you like to say a few words? Okay, thank you.
I've never known a time that he wasn't speechless.
I want to congratulate the board on making the decision to render the decision in the citizenry in Glendrum. I too watched the interviews that you conducted last week, and they were qualified candidates, and certainly there was enough breadth of experience and expertise that the citizens in the Catawba District will have a choice if, if they choose to run. And I hope that they do choose to run, because Catawba District is a spread-out district, it sprawls, and it has a lot, a lot of different communities within the district, and wants and needs. And I think the best way to do that is to be elected to represent the group, because by then you will know what the expectations and the goals and aspirations of the group are. And I look forward to serving with you until the November election, representing as best I can the Catawba District. But thank you for your confidence. As you know, I did not apply, and made it clear that I am not going to run and would not run. But I appreciate your confidence, and I hope that in November, December, we're as happy as we are tonight. Thank you.
Well, thank you so much. And I'd be remiss if I also didn't thank Mrs. Janice Wymer as well. So, very important part of Team Wymer there. So, thank you.
Long-winded. And then Mr. Wymer sometimes talks a long time. So, Ms. Wymer, we've put a three-minute time limit on them too, starting for the next few months, just so we can keep meetings kind of in line. Thank you. Looking forward to it. You were good tonight.
Dave, we can also overrule that.
Very easily.
Just welcome back, Mr. Wymer. And I know you'll do a fine job representing the citizens of the Catawba District. You do have some big shoes to fill in, in Mr. Butzer's replacement, but I'm sure, look forward to working with you.
It's all relative. I'm a size eight. What are you, David?
I do also want to say, the, the four candidates that applied, I want to thank that each of them, they were all outstanding, I thought, and, and would have done, would have done a nice job. I think this is best for, to not give any one of them an advantage, and that let the citizens in the Catawba District make that decision. But, thank you.
Just welcome aboard. Look forward to working with you, Dave, and thank Janice for allowing him to do it. I know you can't do it without your partner, so certainly thank you. So, forward to working with you.
All right, thank you. All right, item 3.01, if we could, just want to welcome everyone here. If we could stand for the Pledge of Legions. All right, item 4.01, announcement of changes in the agenda? Don't believe we have any, so we'll jump.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the agenda as printed. Second.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Yes. Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes. Yes, ma'am. And if I could just make another quick announcement, board members, just make sure that we're speaking closely to the mic, so all of our, you know, legions of fans at home watching online can, you know, hear what we're saying.
Thank you, Debbie.
All right, item 5.01, we've got recognition of Virginia Public Schools Division Superintendent as Superintendent of the Year for 2020, 2021. So, I have a resolution of recognition right here. For our fantastic Superintendent, Dr. Nicely. So, be prepared, there's going to be a lot of whereases. Whereas, in order to ensure the health and safety of all Virginians' schools across the Commonwealth, closed on March 13th, 2020 due to the COVID-19 pandemic, and most have provided virtual instructions since then as in-person teaching and learning evolved. And whereas, individual school divisions retain the autonomy to decide whether or not new instruction would continue and the format in which the instruction would be presented. And whereas, stable and consistent leadership by local school division superintendents has been vital in the serving of our children through this pandemic. And whereas, school division superintendents are responsible for the health, safety, welfare, and education of each child while creating school cultures, even within a pandemic, that serve all children, regardless of their circumstances. And whereas, public school division superintendents utilize guidance from the Centers for Disease Control, Virginia Department of Health, Virginia Department of Education, local health departments, and local case data in fulfilling leadership responsibilities in their communities like no other time in their career. And whereas, local school division superintendents worked corroboratively with school boards, educators, parents, and community stakeholders in providing technology, resources, curriculum content, emotional support, and meals to children during the pandemic. And whereas, traditional VAS Superintendents of the Year have been selected via a diverse panel of education associations after reviewing an individual superintendent's ability to demonstrate leadership for learning, communication, professionalism, and community involvement. And whereas, all 133 Virginia Public School Division Superintendents have extraordinarily exhibited these qualities while leading their school divisions and communities during the 2021 school year. And whereas, the VAS Board of Directors agreed on January 7th, 2021, to suspend the traditional selection process of determining a single Superintendent of the Year, and unanimously agreed to recognize and honor all Virginia Public School Division Superintendents as Superintendents of the Year for 2020, 2021. And whereas, VAS is appreciative of the School Boards Association supporting this resolution and the honor provided to each Division Superintendent by having his or her respective school board present this resolution to the superintendent to be recognized within the community for which he or she serves and leads. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Rona County School Board has hereby recognized, recognized Dr. Ken Nicely as a Virginia Superintendent of the Year for 2020, 2021, as designated by the Virginia Association of School Superintendents. And the chairman does reserve the right to add a few things under presentation and recognition, so I would like to ask Dr. Nicely to come to the podium for a moment, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. It is with a great deal of honor and sadness to, to lose Mr. Butzer as on our school board, but we do want to recognize him and then take this moment to just thank him for his time of service on our school board. We've developed a, a plaque and recognition for him, which reads that he's, for Don Butzer, in recognition of his run-up county school board member service for the Catawba District from July 2016 to June 2021, and chairman for the years 2009, 2020, and 21. And just as on a, on a personal note, as one of the school board members who has been on the school board throughout my tenure superintendent, just really appreciate your leadership and support during your time of service, and best wishes to you and as you move on to the next chapter. But they say shoes are hard to fill, but you'll, you'll take your shoes with you, so.
I do hold a record. I want you to know that I hold a record for being elected chairman the most times and resigning the most times, so.
So, and I appreciate that. We'll get a, you know, we'll get a.
That I resigned?
Well, I mean, I wouldn't be sitting here writing yet, so, you know.
I will have something to say to address this in my closing remarks.
Yeah, so, I mean.
Thank you.
We'll just wait to closing remarks. Okay, so.
I got something to say, too.
Yeah, come get a photo. We'll present the plaque to him.
So, continuing the theme of, of the evening, I would like to welcome Mr. Goodman up to the stand.
RCA, come on. Thank you. Thank you, members of the board, for letting us speak. I want to start by saying happy birthday to Mr. Butzer.
It's a big day, huh?
We can go cake later. But no, the members of the RCA just wanted to make sure that we had an opportunity to thank Mr. Butzer for his service and dedication these last few years. I know it has meant a lot to all of us, that we've known that we could call him for his advice and. advice and his support. Don is a problem solver like no one else, and that has meant a lot, knowing that he would make sure that he understood all facets of anything before he made up his mind about something. One thing that I have really appreciated is that he approaches things from an open mind and from a position of yes, you know, that he wants to solve problems, even if it means making changes, and that he's determined to address things and make changes when needed. And that's not something that we always find, and frankly, I think that's what make, that's what makes great leaders, and Don is certainly a great leader. He has stood with us in front of the county administration building, he has stood with us in front of the general assembly building in Richmond, he has been there for the teachers and students of Roanoke County all throughout his tenure, and we are so grateful to you for standing with us. I'll try not to get emotional, you all know me. We wanted to present Don with this plaque from RCA in appreciation, Roanoke County School Board Member, Don Butzer, I don't see on my right eye, you're on the wrong side. In sincere gratitude for your service and dedication to the students and teachers of Roanoke County Schools from the Roanoke County Education Association, you will be so missed. We're going to do picture two? Oh, okay, all right. Picture me.
Boy, it's a good thing I made this wireless today.
Next, if I can, I'd like to invite Ms. Laura Bowman up to the podium, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, for the opportunity to thank Mr. Butzer for his dedication and service to the school system and the county this evening. We first met outside the doors of this meeting room in April of 2015, when I was the president of the Roanoke County Council of PTAs. We then met for coffee, so I could hear about why you wanted to serve, and you could hear some county parent concerns. You were such a good listener, and I really appreciated that because I like to talk a lot, especially about kids and teachers in public schools. I've started a memory book for you and have included some pictures and news articles with the hope that you could add more to it and share your story of your time here with future generations in your family. I've also included the Don Butzer Countdown, 78 Reasons to Vote for Don Butzer for School Board. This was my personal social media campaign to get you elected, and even more so, to show my profound appreciation to you for running again. It wasn't hard to share something good about you for 78 days running, and I could add about 100 more today. I'd like to share a few of those reasons as they ring true today, just now as they did then. Day 56, Don's a problem solver. He looks at a problem in a logical and methodical way. He looks at it from all sides and endeavors to find its cause. He seeks out any and all information that will help him solve the problem, and then he provides solutions. I can almost see the wheels spinning in his head when he's presented with a problem. We all know people like this. These are the people we turn to when we need fresh eyes and perspective on an issue, people with experience and knowledge, people who help us through difficult times, people who we can depend on to give us sound advice. That's Don Butzer. He's what I call a go-to guy. Problem solving is something Don thoroughly enjoys doing, and a top reason, he loves being on the school board. Day 34, Don is calm and steady, he's earnest and kind, he's humble and gracious. When people speak with Don, they feel cared about. Don's a highly effective leader with an exceptionally good heart, and we're fortunate to have him on our school board. And finally, day 26, Don Butzer is my hero. He gives me hope. I see his loving heart and kind spirit, and it encourages me to be a better person. Some people like Don come into your life and help you change the way you move through the world. The positive influence they have on you is something to cherish. That's how I feel about Don. He's a class act, and I'm blessed to call him my friend. With your departure, the school system is losing one of the finest minds to ever grace this boardroom, and local public education proponents are losing an important ally. I'm just glad I'm not losing a friend. You're leaving a legacy of pragmatic and thoughtful ideas and policy decisions that I hope will continue. Thank you for your leadership and courage. You'll really be missed, and I know I'm not alone in wishing you and your family the very best life has to offer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, I'd like to, only five more.
I'm just messing with you.
All right, we'll move on. Item 6.01, hearing of citizens and delegations, and first up, and I hope I have these in the right order. We have three, I may have shuffled them up a little bit after I got, after they were handed, so I apologize. But I believe Mr. Canada was the first, so if you'd like to come on up to the stand, Mr. Canada, state your name, state your address.
Jerry Canada, 5911 Plantation Road.
You know the rules.
I do. 24019. I, I've never read the tea leaves any faster than I did tonight when I walked in the door. I see Mr. Weimer and his wife back there, and everybody coming back to congratulate him. It's really weird, I was thinking of David today and thinking, you know, when Stovall left, we did the same thing for Vinton, so there is a precedence for what you did, and I think you did the right thing. I thank you for that. Don, you know, I had, I was on the board when we appointed you, and the same thing, I was on the board when we appointed Mr. Moretz, so it was, it was a good day when we did As far as I'm concerned, you're the best chairman this school board's ever had. I put a lot of confidence in, in my good friend Frank Thomas, who was the school board chairman when I came on board, but I put you right up there at the top and echo many of the things that Laura just said. I recall, just telling a little story here, I recall meeting with you right after we appointed you, and I was trying to explain to you my perspective on how things were right now within the school division at that particular time. You listened patiently, and then you said, "I'll make up my own mind as we go along." And I said, "Fair enough, it won't take long." So it was gratifying, two or three years later, that you and I had a conversation, and you told me that everything I told you turned out to be true. So the truth matters to you, and it matters to me, and I know anyone that crosses you with the truth loses your confidence, so I, that's a great thing about you, is the truth matters. And I'm going to say this, and I'll close with this. I've said this to you privately, I want to say this publicly now, but you're the biggest little man I've ever met. Thank you for your service.
All right, Tina Neal, if you could just state your name and address, please, three minutes.
Tina Neal, 5150 Sugarloaf Drive, 24018.
Welcome.
Thank you, thanks for allowing me this time. I wanted to speak about these and the children, and I'm disappointed that there aren't more people here, more parents here. But apparently, based on you are in charge of the health and well-being of our children, I'm in the right place, anyway. I know that we've all been born into a system that is fueled by fear, and it's never been more evident than it has been these last year and some odd months since the pandemic was rolled out. It has continued to be so with the scaremongering regurgitating every few weeks. Now that some of the restrictions have been lifted in many states, and even in our own, Northam has agreed that we are not required to wear masks anymore, we still require it of our children in schools who have been proven to be the least affected by COVID. I have a problem with that. I have a problem because I have a granddaughter at Oak Grove who loves to run and play in the sunlight, but if she's running and playing with her friends like a first grader should be doing, she has to wear a mask, and she complains that she feels like she's going to throw up, that it's made her sick. We've got children across the country who are coming down with staph at the face and the mouth because of re-inhaling toxins that our bodies are made to disperse. With these masks, viruses range between seven, I think it is, nanometers and 970 nanometers. This mask, you could line up everyone in a recent test that was done, which were about 12 viruses, and they could, you could line them all up, and they'd all go through one opening. This in the answer, it says it on the box, that they come in, that it doesn't prevent a virus. So my question is, why are we doing this to the children? The illnesses are coming out, we're finding more information that we've been misled on just in the emails that are now trickling out from Fauci, who's turned out to be corrupt. Even he, in the very beginning of the pandemic, said that the masks don't work, but then when the screws started being put to him, he changed his tune. I don't think we can afford that with our children. I appreciate that at school, you have the health and well-being of our children at heart, but as parents and grandparents and people in this community, we have to take back that responsibility. I know that we're all in the grind with our head down, trying to keep our head above water, sometimes a little bit ahead, but we have to look up and look out for our children because it is our precious responsibility, God-given, that we do this. And I'm asking each and every one of you to take a hard look at this, let us know what we can do. I've contacted Northam's office to get this removed for my children. It's unnecessary. Thank you.
Thank you. Brooke Ryski? Welcome.
Brooke Ryski, 5614 Cynthia Drive, 24018. My name is Brooke Ryski, I'm a wife, mother, Oak Grove parent, a children's minister, and a Roanoke County resident, and I want to start by just giving a profound, just moment of gratitude to y'all for your leadership over the past year, and also to you Superintendent, Dr. Nicely. During a time of fear, uncertainty, and division, you made the choice to put our children first and reopen our school buildings. For what must have been a very difficult and at times unpopular decision, I want to say thank you. I am so proud to be a part of this school system, and to the educators, administrators, support staff, and anyone working for the county that contributed to the success of this past year during a pandemic, I offer my sincere appreciation. I'm here to ask that you continue to put the health and well-being of our children first by removing the mask requirements for the students and teachers for the 2021, 2022 school year. Masks worn for extended periods of time are at best ineffective and at worst harmful. And that's not just my opinion, that's a collaboration that's been proven via science. We've reached a point in this pandemic where I am no longer willing to send my child to elementary school with a piece of saliva-soaked cloth over his six-year-old face to appease the Virginia political and bureaucratic powers that be. I don't need to stand here and cite the numbers because it's now more than clear that COVID is not a threat to our children, and the adults that these children were initially sacrificed to protect have had more than enough time to do what they need to do by way of prophylactic measures, be it natural or vaccination. It's time for our kids to be kids again, and it's time for our kids to breathe fresh air again. It's time for our healthy and able kids to stop worrying about their health or other people's health. This was never their burden to carry, and it's our job as their parents, their teachers, and their leaders to lift that burden and to do it now. Not only that, but we have a duty to protect their health. Never in our history have young children been subjected to such a requirement, wearing masks for the entirety of a school day, including while exercising, even outdoors. What concern and study has been committed to ensuring that these masks are safe for long-term use? That seems to be a question that was understandably placed on the back burner, but I will not settle for it to go unanswered now, and so I've done my own research. And to quickly summarize, the masks are dangerous long-term. A German study of 65 papers found that these masks are saturating our children's blood with carbon dioxide, they're raising their body temperature, they're raising their blood pressure, they're restricting their breathing, they're giving them headaches, increasing their respiratory rate and feelings of fatigue, and decreasing their empathy perception, causing dermatological issues, growing fungus and bacteria, contributing to communication disorders, anxiety, and a general feeling of disconnection. And I'll end with this, just saying, I know the significance of this decision, this asked by me, and I'm just a parent appealing to you for what's best for my kids. I'm well aware that you have many competing interests, and in many ways, you're never going to please everybody, I'm aware of that. I'm just asking you to do what's right and to continue to prioritize our children's health, that's what you've done this past year, and I ask you to do it again. Thank you.
Thank you to all the speakers. Moving on to item seven, Consent Agenda.
Chairman, I move approval of consent agenda.
Okay, second. All right, Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am. And I know I might sound like a broken record, someone always mentions it, but, you know, consent agenda are things that have been brought before the board before, they've been discussed, so. All right, item 8.01, we have the 2021, 2022 RCPs Pay Plan Updates. Mr. Bradshaw?
Mr. Chairman, board members, Dr. Nicely, I bring for you tonight updates to our pay plan that was approved on March 25th. I know you have it up there, but I'll just give you some quick highlights. There's nothing on section one and two. Section three, we had some minor adjustments to names, things like that, we had some spelling errors, things like that, so we just had to make some corrections that we caught. Section three, which is the DBM section, section, excuse me, three is the position which I was just referring to, section three is the DBM section, and what this section describes, just to remind everybody, all the work schedules our employees could possibly have in the county, so if you hit section three, or four, I'm sorry, DBM, these are our work schedules. So for example, if we have an employee that's on A13, we have employees that are 181 days, five hours, 186, 7.33, we found some errors in theirs, we went through, and we're producing contracts. We just want to make sure every employee actually had a work schedule in there, so we fixed that. And then finally, where I bring to you the slight change is in the stipend section in yellow right there. One that I forgot, it's my fault, I forgot to put in the pay plan, was our long-term administrative assistants, we pay them $100 a day, that's standard practice that we've been doing, so I'm just putting that in there. And then the other change is to our IAs, when we had the pay plan approved, it was $13 per hour, but we're asking that you approve that to a $15 an hour for our IAs for summer school and any other activities that they would do. So we're recommending these changes, and we ask you all for approval this evening.
Any questions?
So when you say raising the summer school to 15 an hour, or the IAs for summer school, that correlates to our regular school days?
It puts it much more in line with our other, with our regular school days for IAs.
What do they, what is it for, you know, during the year? I don't even know what to say.
It was changed this year, with the new pay plan, the IA coming into us with a degree will make 1488 an hour, so this is above and beyond what they're doing, so we wanted to make sure that they weren't, most of them were not having to take a pay cut to work these extra hours like summer school and things like that.
Right, and so my only point that I'd like to make and thank you is, this isn't, you know, you hear that $15, it's not the minimum wage thing, it's, it's more in line, these IAs.
That's correct.
Wish we hadn't, you know, some additional funding because they are, especially this year.
They work very hard.
Yes, this year they absolutely went above and beyond. So that's why I'd like, I know limitations, but you know, those IAs deserve and we ought to be able to do better.
That was one of the things that we really put in consideration when we did the new pay plan. And thank you to the board for increasing the IAs' pay. That was, that was something that was very important to us, so.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
Any other questions? Yes, Mr. Ray?
Concerning the IAs, what are the hours?
For summer, it depends on the day. Honestly, I don't have the answer. I think most of our summer school IAs work anywhere between four and six hours a day in the summer. So I'm not 100% sure of that. But this would encompass anything, whether they're working after hours at schools during the school year or summer school like we're doing right now. I hope that answered your question. I could find that out for you exactly, I'm just not sure. Because it does fluctuate depending on if it's elementary or secondary.
Make sure that we were, you know, that the hourly rate was still.
Thank you.
This is not just for summer school, this is permanent.
Correct.
Okay. All right. Question.
That's why we went ahead and put in there other as well, because I didn't want it to just be summer school. We want this to be a change across the board.
Move that we approve.
Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. All right, thank you, Mr. Bradshaw. Item 8.02, Dr. Nicely, Approval of Signatures in the Absence of Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One of the things that's required is for each school division is to have an alternate person designated to sign documents in the absence of the superintendent. And so my recommendation and ask for board approval is to recommend our Assistant Superintendent, Dr. Jessica McClung, to be designated as such.
Motion to approve item 8.02.
Pretty standard there. All right, Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Dr. Nicely. Item 8.03, Summaries of the 2021-2022 Federal Grants. Ms. Stephanie Hogan and Mr. Mike Riley.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Nicely. Tonight, Ms. Hogan and I bring to you the Title Grants for Approval. Every year, we're required to write a new grant for each of these. And what we do each year then is bring it to the school board to let you know what we're doing and seek your approval. The first one is the Title I Part A. That's funds to support student academic achievement. That one's a little over $1.3 million. The purpose of Title I is to provide all children significant opportunities to receive fair, equitable and high-quality education and to close educational achievement gaps. In Roanoke County Schools, Title I Part A funds are used to pay the salaries and benefits of nine Title I teachers in six eligible schools, eight instructional assistants in four schools, one parent involvement specialist and part of the salaries and benefits for staff administering the grant. Title I funds are also used for the following: student intervention and tutoring, instructional materials and equipment, Title I staff professional development activities, school and district parental involvement activities, after-school tutoring and remediation, summer programs and activities. This next year, there are six elementary schools that are identified as school-wide Title I schools. Those are Burlington, Herman L. Horn, Mason's Cove, Mount Pleasant, Mountain View and W E Kundif. That's the summary of the Title I Part A grant. The next grant's the Title II Part A, Preparing, Training and Recruiting High-Quality Teachers and Principals. That's a little over $260,000. Title II Part A is used to provide supplemental activities that strengthen the quality and effectiveness of teachers, principals and other school leaders. The purpose is to increase student achievement, consistent with state standards, to improve the quality and effectiveness of our teachers, principals and other school leaders, increase the number of teachers, principals and other school leaders who are effective in improving student achievement in schools and provide low-income and minority students greater access to effective teachers, principals and other school leaders. During the next school year, these funds will be used to provide elementary and middle school teachers with professional development and best instructional practices in reading, writing and math to meet the needs of students, provide our new teachers and new hires to Roanoke County professional development and Roanoke County Public Schools' mission and vision, including district aspirations and expectations, classroom management, safety procedures, curriculum and instructional practices designed to meet the diverse needs of students and PBIS. We'll also provide pilot groups of teachers and schools with professional development around the design of student portfolios and student-led conferences geared towards graduating opportunity-ready students. We'll also provide district leaders with embedded professional development as to the best effective instructional leadership practices that lead to deeper learning experiences for students. We'll also provide all employees with the opportunity to become members of a research-based organization built on best instructional leadership practices in order to participate in online professional development geared to their own specific needs and/or school-wide professional development. And finally, we're developing a leadership academy to build leadership capacity within the division and to provide aspiring leaders leadership content that aligns with RCPS's expectations and research-based best practice. All professional development is designed to help teachers and leaders improve student achievement. So that's our Title II grant. Title III A is our language instruction for English learners and immigrant children and youth, a little under $40,000. The overarching purpose of Title III Part A is to ensure English learners include, and including immigrant children and youth, attain English proficiency and meet the same challenging state academic standards that all students are expected to meet, to assist teachers in implementing and sustaining effective language instruction educational programs, to enhance the capacity of teachers to prepare English learners to enter all English instructional settings and promote parental, family and community participation for our Ls. We'll utilize these funds to pay for the following: high-quality professional development specific to L instruction, pay staff to provide after-school or summer camps for WEDE lessons, pay tutors for ISAEP and S Life, and pay for interpreters for first-time Ls initiating school planning meetings. So that summarizes our Title III A. And then finally, Title IV A, Student Support and Academic Enrichment Grant, slightly over $100,000. The purpose of Title IV A is to improve students' academic achievement by increasing the capacity to provide all students with access to a well-rounded education, improve conditions for student learning and improve the use of technology in order to improve the academic achievement and digital literacy of all students. This next year, we propose to use Title IV A funds for the following: want to pay for a math formative assessment tool in grades three through eight that can be used to provide actionable information in regard to learning loss that can guide instruction and remediation efforts. We'd like to pay for AP tests and dual enrollment fees for students identified as economically disadvantaged. And finally, pay for PBIS implementation and professional development on social and emotional learning. That summarizes the four title grants that we're responsible for, and we ask that the school board approve those.
Just a quick question. How do these figures, seems like a slight increase over last year, I mean.
It all depends on the, right. It all depends on what happens is the federal government releases certain amounts to the states. And then the states calculate the locality's amount. What we're tasked with doing is we take last year's amount to write this year's grant. Usually sometime in September, they'll release the new allocations. We hope they go up a little bit and we'll rewrite the grants with those new allocations.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Mr. Ray?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Is this based on numbers or schools or how do they base that distribution?
Each, each grant's formula is a little different, depending on, you know, the locality, their local composite index, those types of things. A big portion of it is size. Obviously, the bigger divisions would get more funds if they have more students. The more need that you have locally would also increase the federal funds that you would get based on your local composite index. So all of those are taken into account for each of the grants, but each one's calculated a little bit differently.
There's a formula to choose.
Okay. Thank you.
Make a motion to approve item 8.03?
Second.
Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am. All right, thank you both. All right, item 8.04, Revised CIP Plan for 2022-2031. Ms. Peterson, welcome.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Nicely. I am here because as part of the budgeting process, the school board does adopt a capital improvement plan. The improvement plan, the CIP, was adopted through the ordinance by the county on May 11th. At our last, and the ordinance, what's important about that is the ordinance adopts our capital project fund by project. And so it has William Bird High School listed at 4.6 million and then Glencove and W E Kundif at 4.7 million each. At our last work session last week, the school board approved an increase in the William Bird High construction contract by $7.4 million. At the same time, I presented to you a funding option by which we would reduce the capital bonds assigned to Kundif and Glencove by 3.7 million each in order to cover this change in the construction costs. So we bring this CIP to you for your approval tonight through action item, since we already did present it at the work session last week. And we would like to get it in front of the board of supervisors so that they can amend the ordinance before the end of the year and the ordinances will be accurate as of July 1st.
And you'll, and you will, we will bring this to the board of supervisors so they can act at their next meeting, correct?
Correct.
All right, perfect. So, yeah, and just for the good of the group, this is something, good of the audience and everybody out there watching that didn't attend the school board, didn't see the school board work session. As Ms. Peterson said, we had to update this because of the significant increase in construction costs for William Bird. And, you know, this board definitely, we will not waver in making sure that, you know, William Bird gets renovated. So we're fortunate to be in the position where, you know, we can keep this project moving. You know, but that does require us updating the CIP. So anybody have any questions for Ms. Peterson? Self-explain. Okay, perfect.
Make a motion. Make a motion to approve item number 8.04.
Second.
Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm up next.
Yes, you are. So don't go. Yeah, so just stick around for 9.01, Adoption of Revised Resolution of Intent to Reimburse with Future Bond Sale.
So as I was pulling together the prior board report, I realized that we also need to take action to amend our resolution for the intent to reimburse ourselves from the bonds. We adopt this resolution so that money that we spend between now and when the bonds are actually issued can be reimbursed from the bond funding. Originally, the school board adopted the resolution on December 10th and then the board of supervisors adopted a similar resolution on January 12th. And so I bring a change to this resolution for the additional 7.4 million for a total of $22,441,541. So this is just information that will go under consent at the next meeting. If I can answer any questions.
All right, so item 9.02, Reverse 111220 William Bird High School Budget Reallocation Request.
This is my day to talk about William Bird today. So back on November 12th, the board of supervisors requested that even though we had fully funded the William Bird High Project using the CIP from 2022, it had not been appropriated. So they asked for us to shift funds from current projects in order to fully fund the Avis contract before we signed it. Since July 1st is our go date to be fully funded using the original plan, we would like the, to go ahead and get this on the agenda so that it can be approved at the next board meeting to reverse the transfers that we made, putting the funds back into the tennis projects and back into reserves and back into the Glencove and W E Kundif projects as shown on the board report.
Questions?
reversing what we did.
Exactly.
All right. Appreciate you, Ms. Peterson. Thank you.
I do have a question.
Oh, too late.
Yeah, because I.
Time's up.
I just, it hasn't, doesn't have to do with this, but is time up?
Three minutes went off.
I saw that Prince William County just got 90 million more dollars out of the cares, you know, out of the last portion of stimulus. That, you know, 70 million would buy us a Burton Center, but what is, what would we get out of this? Out of the last stimulus? I know you told us at other meetings, but is this something that just the last stimulus? Is this, is that correct or do you know?
I'm never going to say it's going to be the last because I never knew what's coming through the next door. But we did apply for an additional pot of money through the SR2 piece. And we applied to get three years' worth of summer school through that. So I'll hear back from that hopefully next Friday from the VDOE. And then the SR3 funds, which it would be my guess that that is equivalent to the amount that you're referencing for Prince William County. That has already been kind of, we're starting the process to discuss how we're going to use that. We've got a lot of options on the table and ideas coming forth. A good portion of it does need to be used for learning loss. I don't think I did that. What are you doing each other?
That's what happens when you get talking about money.
Tess, yeah.
Sorry about that.
Just wanted to get into this.
We can't afford batteries.
So now I have no idea where I was going with that. But it is an.
Well, you were so fine.
So we are looking into that and we're going to have a public hearing at, I wanted to have it today, but based on the timing of advertising it, we're going to have the public hearing in July and that'll still be plenty of time. We have plenty of money that has already been approved out of the SR1, SR2 grants to use to keep operating and get refunded in the good programs that the administration has brought forth at this time so that when we come back for the public hearing and we have a more laid-out plan for you guys for that funds.
Mr. Ray, what I thought I heard her say was we're getting 70 million.
I don't know if I know in Virginia can't share it.
That didn't come out of my mouth, but I wish it did.
Yep.
Now we understand.
If you can get it, go get it.
I'm trying.
No, thank you. Thank you, Mr..
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Item 9.03, we've got the EAC Committee 2020-2021 Annual Report. Dr. McClung, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board and Dr. Nicely. I'd like to introduce you to several rock stars tonight. Kevin Richardson from Hidden Valley High School and Samantha Van Ness from William Bird Middle School. Coincidentally, both of them are finishing up their admin certifications. So one of Kevin's tasks this, this year or this spring was to intern under me and part of his assignment was to create a presentation for the board. So Kevin has been the lead on this and Samantha is part of our employee advisory committee. She's going to share just some overviews. That's part of what we do every year with the board. So I will turn it over to these leads.
All right. Welcome. So, Mr. Richardson, I hope you're using some of the vast knowledge you learned from Dr. Stagall in her class.
Of course.
All right, perfect.
Good evening. Right, the EAC committee is made up of a representative from each of the schools throughout the county. I had the privilege of serving for William Bird for actually three years. Due to the closure last year, we had the opportunity to stay on an extra year for some consistency. So this is just a quick preview of who all was on our wonderful group. Some of the key issues that we go over are the purpose, ground rules. COVID, of course, was a huge deal this year. Of course, instructional issues and how we were going to deliver things, our online resources. And we built out a whole new program basically around COVID. Additionally, the online resources, support for teachers and lack of substitutes was a big issue. It was a great way for the staff to have a communication with administration. So staff submits their issues to us and then we present them to Ms. Dr. McClung. Ms. Dr. McClung, who then will go find answers and it's a very extensive document. I'm sure you've seen it where questions are asked and communication is returned. It's considered, you know, kind of like Vegas. What happens there stays there. Everybody's going to, you know, communicate and just nothing's, it's not, you can't ask anything wrong there. All right. So vaccinations was a big thing. We were very thankful that Roanoke County let us get vaccinations and helped streamline that process. Missing time for side effects, that was a, you know, that's not actually a COVID thing. So we, you know, it was a question that came up. Like if you get sick because you got the vaccination, it didn't count as COVID leave. So that was like a concern at one point. Cleaning practices was a big deal. Bringing students back, of course, has been a priority. COVID notifications, that was a big issue this year. Instructional issues, of course, Wednesday help sessions. Each school had their own drive with that, virtual teachers and instructions, online resources. Webex and Blackboard was a concern, or not really a concern, but a topic. Each school, we had the best technology. We were one of the only districts, I think, that continued using technology we had before and added to it and didn't have to learn something new. We were, consistency was a big issue, it was a big push. We had linked stuff. So if you had a kid at one school, you pretty much knew what they were doing at the other school, hopefully. Virtual check-ins, of course, and so support of, for teachers, lack of, sorry, guys, my thing died on my phone. Support of teachers, IA sub hours not matching, sub pay increase, that was great to attract an increasing sub pay. The next agenda for Dr. McClung is to identify new folks for next year. As I said, it's a two-year term and typically they like to get new fresh faces in so they can see what it's about.
No, I appreciate that. Dr. McClung, can you walk me through the, the steps for each school as far as EAC? My hope would be is that that is a, is a teacher decision and the principal has no say in who's their EAC rep. Is that true?
We won't get to answer that. How do they handle that in the schools?
Yeah, it was an open forum. We kind of, whoever wants to do it, does it and we kind of take, they don't have any say of what comes to the board.
So my question is, is, you know.
Principals open it up to staff who would like to serve.
You know, so is it, is it a staff vote and?
I don't think they vote. They, they talk about it at a faculty meeting and then there are teachers who feel led to represent their schools.
Do you think maybe, maybe next year we can, you know, are we selecting new members next year or is it all new members or?
No. We, we, they, their terms run on and off at differing times, so we don't have a brand new committee.
And, and I appreciate you, you know, giving me some time to answer these questions just because I have heard different schools do it different ways. And, and I just think it might be helpful if we have a written consistent policy to how we're selecting our EAC representatives.
I think that would be great. I think that's a great thing we can take back to the group and we can ask the current, current team how they feel that would best work in their, in their buildings. You don't want a policy or practice.
I would like a, I mean, I mean, a practice, I mean, honestly, that is consistent from school to school.
Yes.
You know, if we say that this is something we're going to talk about at a faculty meeting, let's make sure it's done at every factor.
So it's just so it's consistent. Yes, we can do that. We can do that. But the rest of the process, teachers submit their questions to the EAC reps. They don't go through their principals for that. And I have a link that they click on to submit their questions to me. They can choose to put their name and their school name on the question or they can choose to have their question remain anonymous. Sometimes it's helpful if they put their names so we can follow up individually. We try to handle issues at the balcony level, at the district level, at the EAC meeting. But if there are school specific issues that come up, we try to follow up with the school if we know where the concern came. So once I round up those answers, I create a document and send back out. It goes out to all the principals. They typically have the email listing in their building and the reps and they can share that at their faculty meetings. But everybody does get the written copy of the final report.
Perfect. Thank you. Any other questions, Mr. Ray?
Yes, thank you. When was the EAC established?
Ooh, years before my position came on board. I believe Rebecca Eastwood did that under Dr. Lang's direction, probably Tom Wise at my age, but maybe 10 years ago, maybe more. Yeah. Yes, it's, it, okay, 20 years. I don't want to show my age. Years run into each other, but yeah, it's, it's been in existence for quite some time and they typically meet four times a year and we've continued that. We did have to resort to virtual meetings this year, but it's much better in person when we can play off of each other's ideas.
Yeah, I think it's a very important committee and what are the term, term, term limits and?
It was set up as two years, but that doesn't mean, we don't run people off. If, if your school, just like what you all did at your school this year, they felt because of COVID, they wanted a consistent person and that's fine too. But I do always reach out to say, here's whose terms are expiring to principals and please work with your staff to identify someone else to come on board.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Well done.
I don't want to open a can of worms, but.
Go ahead.
Yeah, so, well, it wouldn't be me. So we have the student advisory council, right?
Yes, sir.
Now we've got the parent advisory council that's going to.
And we have teachers. We have.
Present at the meetings. Wouldn't it be nice if we had our teachers present at the meeting? Because I think these, these, these items come up uniquely. Now, now I appreciate you being here, not just once a year, but I think, you know, these problems come up uniquely. And so I heard some things in there, in your report and I was listening, you know, like subs seems to be a recurring theme that we've talked about. We, you know, one of the nice things was we, we do have lap, we had started the laptops and started bringing those down. But I heard the elementary students having more laptops because of the number of kids. Those are things, I don't know, guys, maybe we can have this conversation later, but you know, in any organization I've ever been a part of, what makes us better is, is listening to the people that are in the trenches. That we owe a huge debt of gratitude for making us who we are in Roanoke County as, as a school system. And so those teachers and IAs and transportation, I think, was one of the people.
Yes, nutrition. We try to include everyone.
I, I don't, you know, I, I don't want it to become a, you know, a ripe session, but I want it to be something that's very.
Well, informative and things that, you know, what, what are some things that we can realistically take action on that the EAC? I mean, I want to, you know, it's a good point, you know, making sure that the EAC is, you know, spending their time wisely and actually hearing the will of the teachers and the employees and making sure it gets to our attention, you know?
I think you have great ideas again, you know, and, and I'm sure at staff level you're hearing some of that, but maybe there's things that are funding led or.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea and I'll be happy to work with Dr. Nicely, Nicely to see how that would best fit into your meetings next year. And we certainly welcome you all to attend any of our meetings as well, just so you can be there and be a face and, and speak on behalf of the board.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank y'all for serving.
I think having, you know, we, we have a student advisory committee that certainly reports to us all the time, so that's certainly a good idea.
All right. Perfect. All right. Item 10.01, report by Dr. Nicely.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just briefly, we've, our summer programs have kicked off since we met last. And I got a report from Ms. Hogan. We're looking at over 1,100 students at the elementary level involved in summer programs this summer. And between middle school and high school students, we're looking over 400 students. And we're, you know, communicating with the principals in terms of making sure there's their staff. So we appreciate the board's support and letting us use some of the S R funds to increase that hourly rate this summer. We also added, of course, transportation using those S R funds this year for our students. That's really made a huge difference. And so that's some, that's something that's gone, gone really well and just grateful for the board's support with that. Also want to thank Ms. Hogan, Mr. Riley, our, our committee of principals and assistant principals who organized our leadership conference that we put on in the last two days. We were, we were at the Vinton War Memorial using that space. This is all of our principals in Roanoke County, our assistant principals, our department heads, directors, supervisors come together just to kind of reflect on the year and, and sharpen our tools and continue our own professional development and leadership training so we can lead our schools. And I just want to take the moment to thank all of our leadership, our department heads, our principals, our assistant principals and, and all the folks. Of course, in addition to all of our other, other employees and, and teachers and everyone else. But just grateful for the last two, two days spending time with our leadership and, and all that they've done during this past year to, to lead our schools. We couldn't do without them. One unique thing that I just want to highlight was on Tuesday, we had a team from our Burton Center engine building team come out and do a demonstration on. They, it's really fascinating. Mr. Ray was there and witnessed it, but just, there's all the skills that go into this in terms of just collaboration, the communication, the, the respect for each other's abilities because they all have different roles they're playing and they play those roles. It's just, it's just really fascinating to watch. These are, these are teams, of course, who have won championships at the national level and they promise they'll continue to, to go back and compete and do that. I want to thank Mr. Kish from the principal of B CAF for organizing that, Mr. Hoback, the sponsor for coming out and being with them as well. Just one more highlight. I want to just give a shout out to our technology department. Mrs. Van Ness, I appreciate you highlighting the fact that, you know, as a school division, over many years, you as a school board have invested in our technology resources, so many resources that our school, our schools rely on, our teachers rely on. And I appreciate the acknowledgement that because of that investment, just how we were much better positioned over this past year to, to, to build on what we already had, supplement that, but not having to learn things for the first time, you know, across the board. So if you get a chance, stop by the, the gym, you'll, you'll be reminded in terms of the huge operation that Mr. Terry and our technology team oversees and making sure all those laptops are, are processed and it's all hands on deck. Got to walk through this morning and, and, and talk with some of them and the work they were doing and just, just appreciate all the work that they do. There's so many things that happen like that behind the scenes that we're not always aware of, but I just really appreciate all that they do to help us prepare, prepare for the next school year. Thank you.
All right. Reports and inquiry of board members. So, Ms. Greenway?
Sure. Few things. I want to thank again our candidates that applied and I, I hope each will consider running in November. Want to thank Mr. Hudson for being here. We appreciate you and the others as well. You know, this, in our society as a democracy, I wish we had six or eight, 10, 12 people running for each school board. I think that's, and, and for board supervisor, I realize all those are uncontested. You know, I mean, I just think that's what makes us better, our ideas and new faces. So thank you for being here. You know, we heard the lady they've all gone about masks, but we've talked about that and hopefully we're going to be back unless something changes. But what I think they need to, to remember in some fashion is that part of that was governor related. That wasn't just school division driven. So, you know, that was passed down for the state. But hopefully in the next year, we're going to, going to get these kids back to normal. Be my hope and desire that, you know, they do get to act like kids and, you know, put that last year behind us and move on. Want to embarrass some folks here real quick. I want to, Cindy, Dr. McClung, Dr. Nicely and Ms. Peterson. It doesn't go without notice that you are losing weight. And, and it's one, what a wonder, I mean, good for you. Now, we're going to put a requirement in that you have to make board members lose weight. Now, if you can do that, you've got it licked and I need help. So, but congratulations. All of you look great. And I don't know if anybody else and I missed you, but good job. Very nicely done. Last, I'll, you know, I've already roasted Mr. Butzer once, but I'll do it again. Mr. Canada said something, truth matters. And I think my, my highest compliment to you is that I, I never, never once thought that you weren't trustworthy or that you weren't standing with integrity, speaking the truth. And, you know, we've butted heads. We've also been on the same side.
Occasionally, our version of the truth is different.
Well, well, I don't know about that, but I think that's why we butt heads. But no, you know, I do thank you. We've done, we've accomplished some really good things. And so, you know, I, I know our time's been short on the board, but I appreciate the time that we've had together and I have learned. And I appreciate, and I, I echo what some of the others said. I don't know, and I obviously only have the tenure of us as a board. Mr. Ray and Mr. Retsch and I kind of came on at the same time, but you've been the most thorough, you know, really diving in. We're going to miss that knowledge of, you know, knowing, hey, Don will jump in, he'll get us the info on the situation or that situation. So, you know, I appreciate you. I appreciate the time. Glad our paths crossed and I wish you the best.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I want to, if I had to think of one thing to say about Mr. Butzer is that he made a difference. And he made a difference in, in so many different ways here with our school system, whether it be teacher salaries or the construction projects at Cave Spring and William Bird, a new turf field out at Glendur. He, he made a difference and, and Ms. Goodman and Mr., Ms. Bowman and, and Mr. Canada, they, they were right on the money with the things that they said about, about you and your time. And your heart, I know, was always in the right place. Every, with every decision you made, it was thought out. It was, and we didn't always agree either.
But we did three times in a row.
Yes, that's true.
Boy, that was a record.
Sorry, three in a row. That was amazing.
But you, you looked out for the RCEA, you looked out for the bus drivers, you looked out for the nutrition workers. There wasn't an employee in the school district that I, I don't think you looked out for during your tenure and you will be missed. There's, there's no question about it. You're leaving our school district in a much better position than, than it was when you, when you got here. So good luck to you and Katrina and your family and safe travels.
Appreciate it.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Wanted to thank Mr. Weimer for getting the retirees together. We've been trying to do it for a couple of months now, but we finally got everybody together. And last Thursday, they, the, we, teachers, administrators, there were all kind, you know, that were former teachers at Cave Spring and they got to go through the school. And what we thought was going to be an hour turned into two hours. But everybody is sort of like a reunion and everybody was able to, was able to get, you know, to reminisce on old times and also see what, what a beautiful school it is. We will be having an open house on, for everyone and ribbon cutting on July the 31st. And more of that will come later, but, and we got the sad news that Garland Lott passed away. He was a former principal at Cave Spring High School that day when, while we were there. But thank you, Dave, for getting those folks together. I would also like to thank the candidates, you know, that came forward, you know, to put themselves in, you know, for public service. Mr. Hudson, thank you for being here tonight. You know, and the commitment that these, that the folks had and when they came and were interviewed, they were all very committed to what the cause is, is our children. So, you know, I look forward to, look forward to serving with Mr. Weimer, but also whoever the new person that be elected. Where'd I start, start about done? We had a, you know, we had a unique profession that he brought to the table in building and facilities, which he knew. profession that he brought to the table in building and facilities, which he knew up one side, down the other. And it helped so much as we've, as we moved forward on projects. As you know, Cave Spring project got a little sideways when, when we got on a bid that was way over what we had budgeted.
Seventeen million.
Right, and so we, so Don called me and he said, Mike, what can I do to help you? And so we got together and, you know, he had the right suggestions that to, to help get this back on track. And we met very regular with architects, contractors and finally, you know, we're able to put, put the pieces together. And, you know, it was very, his knowledge of facilities was invaluable and I really appreciate everything with that. And he hasn't been just a board member, he's been a friend. You know, we, we can, you know, we talk different stories, whether it be school stories, personal stories. You know, how, you know, what better, what could we do better for our schools? And he was always there and he always had, you know, had suggestions. And as they said before, he thoroughly, he thinks through very thoroughly a situation and how, what the end results will be. And that's what you see as a good leader, that they think through those things to solve it. Not just come with a problem, but he gives you the answers to solve it. We will miss you, Don, and, you know, I hope you, hope we'll stay in touch and best, best luck.
I will, as I said earlier, I'll be watching you and if you screw up, I'll be writing letters to the editor, so.
I thought, I think you'll be calling us.
Oh, yeah.
You screwed up, you know?
That too.
We still got our cell numbers.
Go ahead, Mr. Butzer. All right.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Sure. All right, wow. What an experience this has been. I'm, I'm sort of an example of you never know where life is going to take you or what doors are going to open. And since Mr. Weimer is here this evening, I'll tell you a little story. It was about seven years ago, I just thought I'd go see a movie. It was called The American Sniper, ran into Mr. Weimer. And Mr. Weimer was, had I think already announced that he was leaving the board. And he asked me, would you be interested in serving on the school board or running for school board? Out of the clear blue and nothing I've ever thought of in my entire life. I had no idea that I'd be headed in that direction. Well, I did run, I lost that first election, but I learned a lot about elections and the, the next one I won pretty handedly. And then the, the next one after that, no one decided to run against me. But what an experience this has been for me. It has opened so many doors with respect to new friends, people that I know that I'll stay in contact with for as long as I live. I've met so many wonderful people. One of the reasons why I may have been such an advocate for the RCEA in general was, was for teachers. And one of the things that I learned early on, as I was getting to understand this job and visiting all the schools, is what a wonderful job, what a wonderful human beings almost all of our teachers are. For the money they make, what they do with respect to buying their own supplies, buying food for kids who can't afford it, buying clothes, the nurturing. In many cases, teachers have become the, the, the parents, if you will, of kids who have situations at home that, that aren't very good. And, but teachers generally wouldn't speak up for themselves. They're, they're sort of built that way. They just don't want to complain, they'd rather just go somewhere and cry about a problem. But one, once I got to know what they did, it would really rile me if I thought any teacher was being abused in any way. And I don't mean abused or, or treated unfairly. So that, that's one area that I really got interested in. And if you take care of your teachers, you're taking care of your students. And those personal relationships are the thing that I'll walk away with and feeling so good about and, and making that decision to run. All the other stuff you heard tonight, it's all wonderful and I really appreciate it, but it's, it's, it's the appreciation of educators. It's the appreciation of, of all of these little people that, that we have in our buildings that we nurture and teach every day and try to make good citizens. And it, it has really been fun to do this job and I'll, I'll miss it. But me and my family are on to a new adventure and, but I will, I will always stay in touch and always be here to, if anyone has a question or wants some advice, advice is free. Thank you all very much and I'll miss all of you, thank you.
Happy birthday.
Yes.
Happy birthday.
Thank you. Yes. What more can I, what more can I add, you know? I mean, personally, I'm going to miss your leadership, your energy, passion and, and wisdom. I would say that, you know, probably 99% of the time you or I, you know, we're probably on the same, you know, wavelength in thinking and, you know, and if I wasn't, you had no problem calling me out on it. You know, but you always brought, brought the facts to the table, which I, which I appreciate. You know, I think being on the school board, you know, with you is certainly, you know, I've witnessed your leadership, I know that I've grown, grown from it. You know, I think we have a unique experience being married to an educator. You know, I'm not saying, you know, sometimes that, I'm not saying it should be a prerequisite, but it certainly gives you a unique perspective, you know, as, as you're, as, as you're, you know, helping, helping with policy. You know, you, you always listen, you know, and I've learned, you don't want to see him angry, I can tell you that. So. What's that? But, yeah, yeah, I, I'm going to miss you. It's, it's been a privilege, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm a better person for knowing you and I wish you mu- much success.
Thank you, thanks.
I appreciate it. Do the honors? Adjourn it, baby. All right. Adjourn to me.
Oh, thank you. All right, meeting adjourned. Is that legal?
It is now. It worked.
I want you to know they turned my pass off, I couldn't get in the building tonight.